Recording in progress.
Good evening, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and for all of us who can, please rise for the pledge. And how about Mr. Esco?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brittany, roll call vote. Oh, can Brittany hear us?
Yeah.
Don't forget to unmute.
Hi guys.
Hey, there we go. Now we got you.
Okay, hi. Alright, roll call?
Yep.
Here, Joseph Diver.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
Mark Stroud.
Here.
Dan Esco.
Here.
Don Boyle.
Present.
And town manager, Tony Hutchinson.
Here.
Great, thank you Brittany. Public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on a meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than thirty minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair doesn't need many answered questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when a board discusses an agenda item, please make the request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We're meeting in person, making us being available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we'll not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you would like to be sure and participate, please try to attend in person. Anyone need to address the board? Seeing none? Hearing none? For the board, I'd like to recommend if we can take item 11 first. Item's not anticipated forty-eight hours before the meeting. The chief would like to discuss a grant opportunity that we have been presented by the state and the approval of that grant. So if there's no objection, can we move 11 to the top?
Yep. Put the ball on that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great. Alright, Chief, how do you go with it?
Thank you so much. I'm just gonna read very briefly. The Dalton Police Department has been awarded $129,368 in-state funding from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security's Office of Grants and Research for the fiscal year 2023 Body-Worn Camera Grant Program. So I'm also gonna read this to go with it. The Office of Grants and Research respectfully requests that your agency refrains from issuing any press release at this time so the administration can issue a statewide press release. You will be notified when the press release has been shared. I say that because we are not allowed to give any press releases on this at this point, but we have to come in front of you to accept this grant. So, and they gave us a five-day window to do so. So, this grant was a child of Becky and I. We put in for funding for body worn cameras. I will say our department has been testing cameras for a month. Somewhat kind of secretly. A lot of other departments have been in the media for it, but we've been actually doing it for quite a while. We're testing one vendor for about four weeks now. And we're testing a second vendor at the end of November. So currently, there's three or four officers, depending on the day, wearing Axon body cams. And then we're gonna be testing the body worn utility camera system at the end of November. They're actually coming up for a week. So, and they're gonna put cameras in the cruiser and they're gonna do the whole thing. So this $129,000 plus funds our grant, or funds our body worn camera program for five years.
Awesome. Congratulations. And thank you Becky. That's great work.
Becky and I lived that for a very long time.
Tom, anything else to add to that? Alright, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay. That's awesome. Great work by everybody. And we'll do this administrative approval tonight, but we'd love to hear more about the program. Board wants as well, and have a group come back and talk about it in detail.
And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them now, but...
And any questions from the board?
I think it's fantastic. Wonderful.
Is there a motion to accept the grant as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you Becky for the great work.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll break and move that one up. Are there any other items that not anticipated forty-eight hours before? Hearing none? Number five, approved and signed general election warrants. Mr. Hutchinson?
This comes to us through the town clerk. It is the warrant for the major election coming up in November. And it contains all the statewide offices that are being voted on. So, uh...
And, uh...
This also includes four referendum questions.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Or approve, I guess? Uh, second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion?
Now, Mr. Juney.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson?
I want to point out, in conjunction with the statewide midterm elections, also elections for school committee members is on the ballot. Looking at a sample ballot, both of them are vacant. Looking, they're volunteers or write-ins, so uh, you should be cognizant of that. If you have a good friend, you can sign his name in and maybe you'll be on the school committee.
And it's two write-ins.
Two?
Yep.
And, uh, along the same lines, I'll note that district attorney and sheriff are also on the ballot on the county level.
Great. Thank you Bud.
For district.
Yeah, those state running center.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now I'll just pass this down for signatures.
And that, and that election is on November 8th.
Due date.
Okay, number six, the request for opera funds, $4,000 for additional cost for fibering to connect town offices, offices construction.
Yes, this is the bidding that went on for the grant we got some time ago. I got the request, uh, the invitation for bids out for building the fiber ring. And unfortunately, it came in a little bit over what we had been, uh... The quote that we got to guide the grant proposal on came in over, it actually came in about $12,000 over. And I was able to negotiate the timeframe so that it's now only $4,000 over budget, what we requested. We are paying a little over $3,000 as a match for a $60,000 grant. So that will be contributing about $7,000 to a $60,000 grant, which is still a deal.
Yeah, absolutely. Good work on that negotiation as well.
Thank you.
Um, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you again, Hutchinson. Great work. Uh, number seven, the DPW update. Golf roads, stump removal, other related items. I guess I listed me wrong.
On the list?
Yep. You could slide the chair up, whatever's easier for you bud. What if you wanna stand? That's fine.
Stand on all down. So, it was brought to my attention, uh, about stumps. Like the town cuts trees down, there's stumps removed. Once upon a time, I don't know when it ended, probably a few years ago. With the tree warden budget, the town reimbursed half the price of a stump if it was a town tree. You know, we took down one because it's dying or dead. They requested it down. And they kind of stopped. I think it was more because, was a budgeting thing because of how much tree work we had to do. And we didn't have enough and we keep giving away people for the stumps, which, you know, that's not such a hazard as the tree that needs to come down. So, I've heard a little rumblings about it, so I didn't know if it's something to look into maybe for the next budget to put a little line in in the tree warden budget for, you know, repaying for half of a stump like we used to for town trees. It's something, you know, everybody would like it. I know a few people have heard about it.
So, so we take down a town tree and the stump remains, and we pay half? Who pays the other half?
The homeowner.
Homeowner.
Cause we cut the tree down, it's no cost to the homeowner. So they get that, and then we split. Like if they want the stump removed, you know, they can do it themselves or they can request to get half back. But if we had a budget item, like, it'd be, there'd be some questions whether you'd have to make a certain number. And then if there's more trees than that or whatever, you know, like, like a limit of up to 500 bucks is what I was thinking to do. Knowing kind of how much stumps cost to do.
Per tree?
Per tree.
Yeah, and this is, again, a reminder. There's really no such thing as a town tree. Unless it's actually on town land.
Right.
So all of the trees that are in the town right of way are what we're talking about. Or potentially trees that overhang the road and become hazardous, then the town also has the right to deal with those as necessary.
Yeah, okay.
This, this became a hot topic probably about six months ago when there were caught a bunch of trees up behind North Street.
Yeah, that was, which is that state, so that wouldn't be me, the town, so it's a whole other...
This brought, that brought it to the forefront. And people were asking about, you know, town trees get caught. Is there any way to get the town to help kick in to remove the stumps? And I had spoken to Bud, and Bud said that there was a program years ago that they had. And it's just something I think we should look into and possibly think, well, adding it into next year's tree warden budget.
And, and just to emphasize, the term "town tree" really means a tree that's in the town right of way. The homeowner owns those trees and can do with them whatever they want. They can cut them down to firewood if they want. Uh, they're, they're, they're not owned by the town. But they are in the town's right of way and it's in the town's interest to keep that right of way clear. That would be my argument in favor of this.
Would this be on an as-needed basis for the stumps? Not necessarily every stump?
Not necessarily every. It's kind of, you know, depends on the homeowner, you know, if it's in like their front. With the right hat, they might wanna do it. But, you know, it's all what they want to do. Some people want to find one, some people put up a lot of plants on it perhaps.
And they'd have to pay for it and they get reverse perhaps?
Right. That's what they, that's what it used to be.
I don't really see a huge problem with that necessarily. I don't think everyone's gonna be jumping up to do it either.
Right.
But motivated people will probably.
Yeah.
Some extra cash.
Yeah.
What's your, what's your recommendations to...
I would, I think to do it, again, I mean, I've heard a little rumblings around town about it, cause it used, it used to happen.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, it, it was, to me and I saw, and a lot of them were by sidewalks, and, you know, it's a lot of...
Is it, is it a big enough issue we figure out something this year, or we wait till next budget season?
I mean, I think we could wait till next budget season at this point, cause nobody's gonna do anything pretty quick.
Yeah.
Anything until spring anyways now, so. To me, I would just wait, you know, and we just...
Put it in the tree ward budget.
Put it in the tree ward budget. Kind of think about it a little bit more if we wanna set up some, you know...
I don't think we need to vote, I don't think we need to vote on this tonight, but just any other questions on that?
I think it's a good idea, actually.
Yeah? Yeah, so, I guess for budgets, process, like what agrees with you, and then we'll see what comes out by next meeting when it goes through budget.
Yeah. I think the next one I had was the golf road update, which got an email today. Julie Diver did anyways. And, uh, they are going, Pittsfield stopped, not this past Friday, a little before. They went down and checked it out. They were waiting on some paperwork, which they're supposed to get the end of last week. And then once they got the paperwork in order, they were gonna be able to go fix it.
And that's fixing the culvert?
That's fixing the culvert, where the road, I mean, that's where the road's washed out is where the culvert is, pretty much. So they couldn't get to the culvert unless they fixed the road, so it's kind of, you kind of have to... Cause the culvert's fine, it's just plugged. That's where the beaver's fur started, about carrying it. So that's what they have the permission for, to be able to clean that up. And then they'll get it back in shape, and then we'll be out there.
What do you think about the, the other part of that was road maintenance, that they're saying, okay, it's not gonna be part of their road maintenance plan, but hey, we will offer to procure the material, but you guys can do the road maintenance.
Right. It's kind of that, it's the kind of, I mean, it's, I think in the email it said 450 feet, so it's pretty much the swamp.
Yeah.
Pittsfield's never maintained it in the years that I've been here. It's always been, Lanesboro has a grader, we don't have a grader anymore. What we do is just flower plant around that.
They want to chip them a few bucks, not a lot of those.
We don't want those. We don't need those. But, uh, so Lanesboro usually grader for us once a year, and we can go, we'll go fill puddles, and we can, you know, gravel puddles for the summer, rough enough with the loader or whatever. But, uh...
So it's, it's worked fine, so we have to leave?
It's, to me, it's not a big thing. If we ever wanna ask them for a load of gravel or something, we could, but...
Yeah.
We kind of have our own little pit in the back, so we have our own, we don't have to buy it, so.
Okay. Any questions on...
Thank you for getting that done.
Just a polite email.
Yeah.
So that could...
It wasn't happening by...
So we sit over for an update, so.
Yeah, I don't know if I missed it, but there's no, no, we're not gonna be opening this up this year.
No. No, I don't think there's any reasons. We'd be closing in a few weeks. Plus, there's, there's a couple of trees down, plus I'd still have to get a grader now to get it, so it'd be, to me, it's just springtime.
Yeah.
Get after it. This winter we can go down and fix the tree, and we'll get some downtime.
I would caution against any kind of formal agreement, because I think it's important to remember in principle that it is Pittsfield's responsibility to maintain the roads within their town. Someone floated, you know, well, maybe we could just buy that corner of land and just make it our road. Unless there's some kind of an appetite for that. We'll have to continue on the way we are, but I would, I would caution against putting anything in writing agreeing to a plan.
Good point. Except to your point, Bud, it's been working fine over the years, it's just now this culvert issue.
It's the beavers, and it turns into a conservation commission issue, and, you know, it just pans off pretty much until... And that's, if it was our, it's one thing, we could deal with our own, cause pick the city so we don't, I can, kind of hands are tied.
Have the beaver gone?
Yeah, they've been gone for a while, actually.
Really?
Most of the summer they've been, um, pretty low down there, so it'll be alright once they get it back in order.
And what else do you have for us?
Um, the other thing I was gonna tell you is, Chief Stroud had good news on a grant for herself and her department. But, uh, we did not get the grant for Orchard Road, the one step, the Mass Porch grant we applied for.
Okay.
So...
Good try.
Good try.
A good try, yeah.
Um, I scheduled a debriefing, as they call it, and they'll, they'll set the Zoom with us and go over like what we should try and do different to apply for it again next year. But that's where it is. That's where I'm fortunate with. And I'll look at some other avenues now through the fall and see if there's something else we can try to do.
Cause that was road and storm, right?
That's storm, storm.
Storm, storm, okay.
It's from, like where the field ends, like kind of by PZF to the bridge where the river is. That's second, that section of road is where the issue is. It's bringing all the drains out and going down. But all the work needs to be done in the road.
Okay.
So, that's...
Alright, whatever you learn from that, if you wanna share it with us when time is right, that'd be great. Any questions on, on that? But that might be something we, um, I don't know, if we wanna put just a notice out there on our website for the status of that, maybe? Just so folks can...
See.
Maybe, maybe once we figure out exactly what we are...
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Yep.
What those points are and things like that. But the good news, yeah, the good news is Dalton Division looks great.
Yeah.
You know?
Super speed right now.
That's huge.
It's a super speed right now.
Yeah, it's a little slow, is it?
It's finally lined and makes me sleep the night a little better.
Yeah.
Paint on the road. Without paint on the road, it'll only look wrecked.
Nice to have the other side, and, yeah, a little derby going on, that's all good. But yeah, but it looks great.
I kind of visit Washington, Washington Park too, so.
Yep.
Nice to get that all done.
Nice job to the crew and contractors.
Two people asked me why Orchard Road wasn't straight.
Because it's too, it was so rough, that it wouldn't, it, when it gets bounced in, it would've been all over the place. It's so, it's so rough down there. That's the one road I didn't do, as I said.
Yeah, they noticed it because...
Yeah.
You get old one drill, like you get a door to it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just didn't, and at that point, I was really hoping I'd be doing something on that pretty quick, but not so lucky.
Hey Bud, while you're here, the other related, do you have anything else to add?
I have one more thing.
Okay, good, I'll, I'll...
I mean, my only other thing I was gonna just say is, uh, kind of both, I can go through everything. Cemetery department, everything's been there, all of them. Uh, the parks, it was approved at the town meeting to repay the basketball court, pine road. We put it out to the town, and I worked on, put out the bid. We got zero bids for it, cause then everybody's been so busy. So this winter, I'll put out the rebid, so when people are looking for work over the winter.
Right.
So we did a lineup, we did some stuff.
Cool.
So it's still happening. And then the other thing is the transfer station. Uh, we got a mattress container, recycled mattresses, because November 1st, you have recycled mattresses, box screens, and textile, so you can't throw clothes in the garbage or anything like that anymore. And so there's a bin for that, and then there's another container for the mattresses. And, uh, the only thing in our solid waste committee, we can't pull the price for that, $32 to do it, so it's relatively cheap.
Is that mattress and box screen, or just mattress?
A piece.
A piece, per piece, $32?
Thirty-two piece. And it's all, um, we kind of, we partnered with the Northern Burser Solid Waste. So that's 13 pounds, I believe, at North County-ish. To get a grant to pay for the mattress container, cause the recycled mattress, mattresses gotta be dry area. Can't get moist and wet and stuff. So, and we got the grant for that, so the container's there. That kind of, that kind of moved along quickly. The only other thing I just found out this past week is, uh, if it's a contaminated mattress where it's, if it got wet or moldy, or there's bed bugs or something like that, that can't be recycled, Casella is gonna charge $150 per mattress to put it in there, to put it in the dumpster. So, uh, that's a big thing that, like, I'm gonna have to call them to empty it if there is any in there right now. They get that moved by November 1st, so we'll charge us the $150 mattress, and we'll not charge you that much to throw it out.
So how, how do we, how does the transfer station monitor that? Like, what is that?
He's, uh, Brian, the transfer station's kind of gotta do it himself. For the most part, they take pretty much, we talked to the mattress recycler guy, who's, as long as things aren't crawling, it's not moldy. Pretty much put it in.
Who has rejection? Recycling group, or...
It'll be us, the transfer station, so that's the hard part.
So we, I guess where does Casella come in on the inspection?
Cause it goes into, if it can't go in the container, then we throw it into one of the big long dumpsters up there. When they go dump and see it...
Oh, oh, we throw it in the regular dumpster?
Okay.
Okay, alright, I got you.
That's where, you know, so, you know, also leads me to worry about what we're gonna find on the side of the roads and what we're gonna do then. It's $150, you know. When we open up Golf Road, I've got an idea a little bit.
Don't the furniture stores take these back, Bud? Don't the furniture stores take them back?
I think they used to. I don't know if they still do it as much now or not. Maybe now it's different, cause it's...
If, if you're replacing one, right? We buy a new one, they usually have a hallway thing that you're paying for.
People don't use it as much as possible.
Yeah, but sometimes you just get rid of one.
If you could just make sure the Golf Road makes it to Pittsfield section.
Yeah.
Just have a...
Mattresses out.
A hundred drag, a hundred mattresses in the wet, man.
That's off the record, Sabrina. That was a joke, the I-birds, so Sabrina's up there. Love the words she does. On the transfer station for future agenda, this is just for the board, just want to throw out a recognition or suggestion. If we could have a, kind of a business review of the transfer station finances, how we're doing there on sticker sales and things. I know it's talked about the committee meeting, but just kind of how we're doing there in general. Anybody disagree with that?
Nobody. It's good, um, like in the new year, or sort of, like a six-month review?
Yeah, a six-month review, but like end of year kind of thing, going into the new year, and so...
I think it's a six-month, it's a good run of, good run of how things are going.
Anything, I got one more, but anything else? The, the other thing that we have, we have on our future agenda is that street scan program.
Yep.
And we had asked Bud to come back and give us a review. But I was thinking about the other day, I just wanted to throw it out to the board to say, what do you all want to learn? So you and Tom could be prepared with what we want to understand. Just from my perspective, I just kind of wanna understand how the data looks and kind of overview of the data and what we're looking at, because it seems like everything's into that one bucket. Does it need to be repaired?
Yeah.
But then how do we go through that even further? So I don't know if, if, um... I, I assume you have a good handle on it, but if we need the rep or some of that nature to kind of really go through it?
Yeah, I could do, I could do, I probably could set something up too, if we need to.
Okay.
I can bring, I can bring my laptop here.
Yeah, just so we, then we, that, that's my only suggestion. I just wanna make sure I share that with, with you and Tom, so then we can do that. But anybody else have anything that you want to learn from that review?
Well, it'd be nice to see.
Yeah, we're good to see all the data, and there's kind of the list and what your, what your thoughts are, our next steps.
Figuring it all out a little bit too, so it's good. No, it is, we can do, I can, we can move into that.
So I think one of the other things, you know, is like traffic counts and things like, Tom and I were talking about this the other day. You're blocking traffic on different roads and taking that into consideration and...
Yeah, it'll be important, not just to take the worst condition of the road, but the worst condition of the roads that are traveled the most.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what we're, that's our next step, is to see, you know, maximize the impact of wherever we put our...
Do you need more time on that piece, so we can do this later? I mean, there's no big rush to it, but I just kind of think...
Well, we'll be talking this week actually, or tomorrow, Wednesday.
So we'll follow your lead when you think it's ready.
Yeah. It's on the agenda.
Okay, alright, great. Anything else for Bud while he's here?
Thank you for...
Thank you, again, for all your leadership and the team. And, um, looking forward to those grants coming through the state for the new roof and all that.
That was maybe one of the things, that the town bill goes through, like, we've got a roof and siding and new windows and two rotting overhead doors to the garage.
Yeah.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
We don't have keys in the garage, so. Well, I'll assist you. We'll do that, be nice.
Sounds like it would be nice.
Alright Bud, thank you so much.
Thanks Bud.
Next is the vision session for future town hall and feasibility study. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, partly because we had something of a light agenda tonight, I thought this would be a good time to come back and see what people thought about working with the town hall. I've certainly learned a lot about it myself. One of the most discouraging things that I learned was when the walls, the interior walls were put up, especially along the corridor in the second floor now. They were not put up in such a way so that they can bear any load. And so in order to develop the third floor, we would have to more or less gut the walls of... We wouldn't have to gut them, but we'd have to take all of the sheet rock off and insert studs, sort of doubling up on all the studs, put all the sheet bedrock in the back, paint it all. Which wouldn't have to be done all at once, it could be done so that we weren't displacing everybody again, that sort of thing. But it would be a much more involved project than we all originally thought, which is one of the reasons that that original estimate went up so high. To even put a subfloor in above that to prepare the space to be developed, perhaps a couple of offices at a time, so that it could be spread out over many years. So part of the visioning process is, well, we have, you know, the future in front of us. We don't need to move quickly on anything, but we do need to move in a direction that we are confident we can continue in as, as we go on. The idea of building a new building is of course attractive until you look at what it would cost. Public safety buildings especially are extraordinarily expensive because of all the requirements. And, but even, even the town hall, a modern building, you saw with the high school cost. You know, and that's, um... So we're, I think that whatever we spent on renovating the town hall would probably be less than we would spend on building a new building. But there are other alternatives. Maybe there are existing buildings that could be brought in with purpose, the way the stationary factory was bought in with purpose. So, looking at that sort of, looking at those sorts of options, I think the important thing is to get all the options out on the table and say, what's the range? You know, what are the dimensions of these options? Leasing instead of owning, that kind of thing. Which always makes more sense in the short run and always makes less sense as you go on. Though it does relieve maintenance and other costs like that. So, there, there are a number of different dimensions like that to consider. There are a number of different options. I believe that it is the case that town hall staff needs more space. I think we'll have better space after this project is done, especially the third floor spaces will be more secure. But we still don't have public access to them. So, that, and, and that's another consideration, is that we are dealing with an older building. Anything we do to it is going to, um, be more demanding than a, than moving into some other hypothetical new building. While there aren't a lot of other new buildings in town, other buildings may come up for sale. We don't know what that might mean for the town. Maybe they're older, maybe, it doesn't matter that they're older, because they're accessible anyway. So, uh, there are a whole lot of options like that. And what I would suggest is that a, kind of a small group, not a formal committee, but maybe... So, uh, there are a whole lot of options like that, and what I would suggest is that a, kind of a small group, um, not a formal committee, but maybe some staff, one or two select board members, get together and start working on some kind of a piece that would explain the problem and potential solutions. Storage space is always gonna be a problem, we, there are some records that we have to maintain in perpetuity. Many we don't, so making sure that we're getting rid of all the records we can get rid of is important too. But, uh, we are, we're all working in, in, in spaces that are being used fully. And if, if the town, um, develops further, I think, I think there will be some, some pension going on there. Some people would say that there's pension going on now, some of the people with smaller offices are, I would say, being pensioned now, I'll speak for them. And so that's, that, that would be my idea, and, but I'm also looking for, you know, input in, you know, now that I've kind of laid out the, how I see the, the, the problem, how other people see the problem and the history and, and all of that, what, what people think the town might want and be willing to go for, or, uh, how, how long we should, uh, I mean, I, I don't see any need to rush necessarily, but I think it's a good idea to start thinking about additional space, one way or the other. And it could be that if some staff go somewhere else, uh, often permitting bodies are all in one place. The planning department, planning board, zoning board, uh, conservation commission, board of health often have offices together, because that's an easy place for people to go get their permits. So, yet another possible way to slice the cake with that.
Any thoughts to be given to, uh, purchasing existing buildings?
Um, that's a perfectly good option.
I think we should, we're not water over there, but we should look, instead of just a straight out lease, lease was an option to buy it when we, uh, get involved in this process.
It, right now, it's not particularly acceptable, because although it has a basement with lots of space in it, that too is not accessible. So really, it has two offices, maybe three, if we remodel it. Right now, that, that could possibly fit the permitting bodies, um, board of health, planner, conservation commission, CBA, and planning board don't really have their own offices, but I believe that they ought to.
Public health there's.
But, uh, public health, right now, we're already over capacity for that first floor that's actually available to the public. Uh, also, it doesn't have any meeting space, that, that's another thing. So, the basement would be good for storage, um, for that building, and the first floor could have some offices. I'm not sure that it would, I mean, this, this is one of the things that we'd have to, you know, work out in this.
Uh, just doesn't think about.
Yeah, yeah. I think looking at specific properties is something we can do once we actually know more what we're looking for and what.
The, the one suggestion I have is on, on that vision session work group, we got a few staff members, a few board members, just a few residents, um, to add to that group. And as we're kind of looking at the problems to address and also the opportunities to, to resolve, uh, that insight would be quite helpful, especially from the historic elements of the, the appreciation of the building and the structure and everything else we need to address with ADA and things of that nature. And, um, I was on the vision session for the school and was quite interested, you know, the different perspectives that came into that, right? So, um, and same would be true for this, for, for the town, cause it's, you kind of, I'm not sure if anybody caught the, um, there's a letter to the editor of Eagle from, um, a resident from Lennox. She was just gonna pick up her birth certificate, because she was born in Pittsfield, and she's disabled, and the, the way that she had to get through the building, and then she couldn't get in this door, cause it was blocked. She had to get back into a car and drive back around and go somewhere else, but go up a couple of steps and, and a long hallway, so it's just like that experience, right? And we're a small town, so, um, you know, what are those opportunities? And then, then kind of put that vision on the table, it's okay, how do we now financially do this, right? If it's, if I purchase on the bank building or things of that nature. But yeah, cause things I think about the bank building, walk in and we gotta get the permits, we gotta get transactions done as a resident, right?
Oh, and the town board would be another office that's involved in permitting and.
Exactly, exactly.
License, marriage licenses.
All of the above, right? So I do kind of, I do bring that together, but this is starting the process, it's not, it's not gonna be quick, you know, so. Maybe that's what you think.
I, I appreciate the discussion, and I mean, this is where it all began, whether it's ten years down the road or whatever, I think it's time to do the discussion, discussing it now and starting to get the input. So when opportunities do come forward, you know, it can make, you can maybe disrupt and toss it around, is that what I think is something we need to get on?
It would make sense to, uh, budget for a feasibility study for continued, you know, repair and improvement in light of, you know, making the existing town hall accessible and adequate enough, you know, to handle the volume of business and the staff needs. Versus building new, would it make sense to try to quantify what those numbers are? Cause without it, I don't really know, how can we make decisions without knowing what it would cost to build new and to continue on? I don't know.
Yes, I, I think, I think before we knew that, it would be good to get some internal input into.
Sure.
Needs, aspirations, visions.
Yes.
Accessibility, being a key part of that. And, and we, you know, everybody, um, everybody can say, yes, I need this, I need that, but quantifying some of that, and this, I think would be very helpful. There's certainly a lack of meeting space, there's certainly a lack of, um, I'll say, uh, closed-door space for people, for people to have meetings in their office that are regarding confidential or, or private matters that residents may have.
Oh, that's a good point, the veteran's agent.
Yeah.
It's a real, it's a real issue, you know, when you're.
Veteran's agent doesn't have an office to be in, really. And, and that's, and it's, it's uncomfortable, both for staff and visitors still. And, and as, and we are required to provide them with space, um, and, and we could provide them with better space if we have it.
What opportunity would be to, uh, continue to lease, honest lease, and get your jobs? I think, I think the, uh, consitorium that owns, uh, that building, I forget who they are now. Built up, built up, you know, it's obviously looking for tenants in there. But it's been pretty much vacant since they bought it, except for the CIA raiders, uh, directors offices in there.
That's a, that's not a bad idea, John, so if we budget for, you know, as we continue going down this road and budget some money in there to continue to give you the flexibility as we go through this process, right?
Yep, yep. I'm, I'm certain we negotiate advantageous deal, because as I said, they had all kinds of plans for that bill, and none of them materialized, you know, different businesses and vendors and such and such. And, uh, could, we could get a, a good price for a short term, till we figure out the rest of this. But some of these people over there, that don't have any exposure with the public, like the, uh, possible veteran's agent or town planner, we had one, or something like that.
Kind of do the vision sessions and then think about the flexible space in the meantime, then you take that and go into feasibility, okay, what's this whole thing gonna cost? Because there's some ADA regulations coming into play too. And then if we figure that out, then through how we finance it, but I think Mark's brought on, this could be a ten-year process, we don't know yet, but we start somewhere.
I would say, uh, through the lens of accessibility, determining the departments that have the greatest interaction with the public, I mean, prioritizing relocation of those departments to more accessible office space that's being leased currently. For example, the bank or the first floor of that Kitterich House.
Which we are not visioning for.
So, I'm sure that, I know there's a ramp, I think there's a ramp there.
Yeah, 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 that, that was the area we would want.
Um, and you're thinking, you know, obviously town clerk is probably number one in terms of interaction with the public, collector, maybe that could be number one, city clerk, tax collector, you know.
Those two offices, you know, being more, making them more accessible, uh, sooner rather than later, not waiting, um, may be in our best interest.
I know we relocated a lot of offices around, but thinking about it, uh, for the longer, well, we'll call it midterm, not, not the long term.
Yeah.
But the short, but the midterm, um, might be in our best interest.
I would also explore the congressional church education wing, cause that's all.
Oh, down below, yeah, that's very accessible, yeah.
And that's all accessible?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Are there offices?
It'll be perfect.
There's classrooms, there's, there's some offices.
A little part of it's being rented.
I don't know for sure what's there right now, what's being rented, what's available, but, um, that's right in the main street corridor there.
That's within walking distance.
Lot of parking, a lot of, there's definitely, it's a walkout basement.
Plenty of parking. Yeah, plenty of parking.
Well, again, I think the, the key point is to establish the needs, both as they exist now and as they might exist.
Yes.
With, um, you know, in ten years, if there were additional staff or, or a different configuration of staff or something like that, so. A lot of moving parts to it, but I'm, I'm happy to, um, start floating that by any number of people.
If we were to bite the bullet in the future, as Mark said, it's gonna be at least a minimal of ten years down the road, none of us will be here for, get into that. For a new, not, a town hall, a town offices, you know, one building.
A new building.
New building, piece of land, got the primary part, piece of land right here. How many square foot we would be looking for? The old basement, just office space.
That's exactly the question we need to answer before we can talk about.
Then we have primary agenda, the estimated square footage?
Yes, that, that's what I've been trying to say.
We have to, we have to figure about square footage and multiply it by four hundred necessary destruction costs on these days, four hundred dollars a square foot. You have an instant answer.
Times, uh, five percent per year for the next ten years.
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay, maybe ten percent.
One, one of these waters are up to like half, you know, they're five hundred million, so let's all just give it a tick and see what happens. But I, I, I love the idea of the vision session, so, um, when do you think you, when do you think we would want to kind of get out of that group or somebody help you form it up? Do, want a couple of board members to volunteer tonight in the group, we only have two. Which is absolutely fine, but if anybody wants, wanna volunteer tonight to help you kind of shape this all up?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd be up for it.
Dan, Mark?
Yeah, Mark. You?
Great, thank you both.
You know, unless Bob or John had a particular desire to step up.
Go for it.
Awesome.
Be in touch via email.
Fantastic, then just, we'll just see that process go and go from there. Very good. Any other questions on visioning or anything else to share? That was great, thank you, Tom. And, and John, thanks for that input on the, the, um, the flexible spaces at Kitterich House. Lots of congressional church, so there's some opportunities there. Um, alright, next is Tom Major update.
Uh, first, some project updates. Uh, the most developed project is town hall renovation. I'm in the midst of getting the contract signed for the town hall work. The part where it gets put back together is almost done with Cape Cod builders. I'm waiting to hear back from the asbestos-removing firm, Abide Inc. The bids came in right at the top end of our authorized borrowing, as you know, um, and, uh, as was mentioned, if we need to meet any contingencies, I may ask the select board for ARPA funds to fill that gap. The preliminary engineering study for Walker Brook is just wrapping up. We have a summary of the hydrologic and hydraulic analysis, a key aspect of the study. The next steps are the preliminary and final design memos. With the final design memo, we can go out to bid for the final engineering and grant development, uh, the funding for which will be contingent on getting the grant. This is an instance where we can actually spend money, uh, before we get a grant, but the risk is on the engineering firm to actually get the grant. They would apply for the grant, and, uh, if they don't get it, then they don't get paid. When I was in Conway, it took us four years to get the, uh, the grant approved. A lot of it has to do with the, the, uh, benefit cost analysis. And what we have to show, now that we know that the cost would be about five million dollars, is that there would be about five million dollars worth of damage if there were a major flooding event. So that's the, that's the, the key to getting the grant. The police regionalization project is still alive, as Hinsdale officials are trying to move the project for their coming town meeting. They're setting up, and, and presumably that's just to approve going ahead without a, a specific plan. But, uh, that, that would at least allow the towns to start serious planning and negotiating all the points that were raised in the report. Hinsdale officials are setting up community Zoom meetings to try to help their residents to understand the problem, which is admittedly difficult, and to take advantage of Dalton's offer to help them out, though it would cost them on the order of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The final report has been posted to our website, though the consultants will continue to work with Hinsdale as they reach out to various groups of residents, uh, through the end of the year, and maybe even into January. Uh, I also just got back, uh, the bid for the fiber ring to connect all town computers. Uh, it came in higher than expected, as I mentioned before, um, uh, it's four thousand dollars over the grant, thank you very much for allowing our money for that. Stringing the fiber should be done by the end of June, with the connections made in July. The newest project is the sewer repair, I'm working with Bud on the best way to procure the engineering for that work. Because the US Treasury now allows towns to use the procurement laws of their own state, we could use the existing engineering firm to do the final designing and take care of the bidding, uh, but again, we'll be discussing that later this week. In other news, I've been working with the health agent on finalizing an eviction due to unsafe living conditions. An agreement was signed with a number of provisions, including for the owner not to live there, but to have access only from nine AM to three PM to clean up the house. After an inspection by the fire chief and the building inspector, we're now seeking an order to board up the house as it has been declared unsafe, especially the floors. I have arranged for our IT consultant to give a cyber, uh, oh, I arranged in the past for our IT consultant to give a cybersecurity update at the most recent department head meeting, which was informative and helped staff understand the range of challenges and degree of awareness necessary to. The town I used to work in, the IT consultant said, "It's just a matter of time."
It is, it happens.
So, uh, but, but we are very well prepared, very well.
Every time I get an email internally, we like to, you know, it's HR, we like to talk about your promotion, I go, ooh, no. Say it to the IT guy, this is a scam.
Uh, and finally, we've gotten a new proposal from Citizens Energy Corp. for the Warren property, in which they are proposing to pay all back taxes and fees due.
So time is on our side.
I am working with town council on how to develop such an agreement so everyone can move forward.
Excellent.
Case the board didn't know, it's a project within two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's significant.
Yeah.
It was kind of like, they, I think their initial was like in lieu of back taxes, and you held firm on, you said, not so sure about that, and. That's excellent, excellent.
And that's it.
Uh, just, um, and thank you, Tom, for that, any questions for Tom? I just have one, one comment, but great update as always, any questions from board? Uh, I think that, uh, Tom, you know, Tom and I had conversations on the police, about the, uh, police regionalization, and thought that our consultants would come back asking us to regroup the, um, for another town meeting for Dalton, but really wasn't clear what direction we're. regroup for another town meeting for Dalton, but really wasn't clear what direction we're going to go. So, we met with Bob Graves over at Hensdale and their chair and the board, the two chiefs, and really asked them to take that lead and figure out what their town wants for services. You know, do you want to continue going down police reform and look at that cost? Or do you want the regionalization option? And if so, so asking them to go do their homework, and then as they do their homework, they can come back and share that with us and say, well, our residents are acceptable to this kind of idea or that kind of idea, and kind of pause our efforts in that space until they come back. But I would highly recommend all of board members to take a look at that report, because it's very informative. I thought the consulting group did a nice job on that. And it kind of lays out options, right, but no options have decided yet. There's a big decision on part of Hensdale. So, Tom, thank you to you and to the chief for your leadership on that. It's not an easy process, but it's an opportunity to see how it all shakes out. But I think the key takeaway, it's not us asking to regionalize, it's Hensdale saying, "Help us through this process," and maybe regionalization is an option. Any other questions or comments? Future agenda items?
Mr. Fisher? I've got the transfer station update and this street scan. What would you do?
Tom, when you, the people that are crazy APR land up there.
Yeah.
When they go in, can you find out if they're gonna look at minerals, like if there's gravel there or something, or if it's, is that allowable under the APR?
Is what?
It's like a gravel operation, if somebody bought it, can they mine the gravel out of there?
I don't believe that's an agricultural use.
Because prior to that, that used to be a gravel thing up there. And actually, where the field is, where part that we want to develop is all sand from where the gravel used to, the process used to be. And that's why it was so, there was nothing in it, it was all sand. Those banks are probably full of gravel.
Which is a higher value.
Really high value.
Yeah.
Well, it will certainly be up to the buyer to maintain it according to APR standards, which means being actively managed agriculturally.
Do we want to sell it? We could sell the gravel, I mean, lease it to somebody.
I mean, no, no, we, yeah, we have to sell it under the APR. And in fact, the state, of course, maintains the right of first refusal. So, if the buyer from our side does not buy the Windsor parcel, the state may step in and buy the link itself, buy the parcels itself, and resell those parcels. That's a possibility.
Any other future agenda items? So, do we want to put maybe a staff's update on that APR land in process, or are we...
If I had one, I would have put it in under my project.
Fair enough, Tom.
I have given them another nudge.
Fair enough. All right, remarks for the select board?
Mr. Chairman, I just, because I didn't see any agenda or announcements, I think we maybe we didn't mention that next Monday night is traditionally trick-or-treating Dalton, from five thirty to seven.
Yeah, we have that on the announcement section.
Is it? I'm gonna get an old man, get in the car, yeah. Let me jump on your turf.
No worries.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
It's a big topic in the community, because you're a third in the block.
I had the old, old agenda.
No worries. Any other remarks for the select board?
Yeah, the annual meeting in general, are you going down, Tom, and usually one of the board members?
Oh, the Mass Municipal Association?
Yes.
Yes, I am planning to attend.
Yeah, we always budget for one or two, and I was thinking maybe Dan could go down if he had the time available. I mean, I've been before. John's been a few times. I have to remember.
Never been in those clothes.
It's good to know what the Mass Municipal Association is and does, and to take advantage of the opportunities to talk with a wide range of municipal officials from all over the state about areas of common interest.
And they have great classes.
Where is this year?
Share the dates.
Always where it was down there.
Yeah, the convention center under the John Hancock building.
No, it's moved around a little bit, but maybe it's been here for the last couple of years because I haven't been, but one time it was on the Cape.
Ooh.
Done that way.
Exactly, yeah.
Anyway, yeah. See? You're the man.
They don't take it like the Encore Casino.
Take a while for the family.
Encore Casino.
Yeah, that would be a pleasure.
But the dates released already?
Yes, it's usually the last weekend in January, and it's always a Friday and Saturday. Starting very early on Friday till arriving Thursday night is...
But you don't have to go for both days. Certain events going on Friday night, mostly it's a big banquet, not many business events. Most of the businessmen, events and workshops are on Saturday.
Saturday.
Well, the workshops are on both days. Association meetings are always on, I forget, they're always on the same day.
Why don't you and I connect offline from this, and we'll see what we can do? Thank you for volunteering me, Bob.
I just have one announcement, just a...
I'd like you.
Just a shout out for two of our great community organizations. One is the 12th Management Elders Alliance Club. There's a big event, was it, Bob, on the fourth of November? Fifth of November at the stationary factory, it's a comic band by Kiss that's gonna be there. So, they've always had these events, they have different bands and different things, but always a great event, but a nice fundraiser for two great community organizations. Get your tickets, get your tickets soon. Any other remarks for the select board? All right. Annual car permits, back stickers, recycling, only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station and on the town's website. Town offices update, the treasurer and town accountant have moved to the old Berkshire Bank Building and 488 Main Street. Town Dalton currently has a following job opportunities, a highway mechanic, building grounds assistant, and a town planner. If interested, please visit the town's website or call the town manager's office for more information. Any applicants for the town planner yet coming?
We have had two, one has taken another job, and the other is moderately good fit for the position I'd like to be.
Okay, sure, thank you. Let's see, there are numerous committees and boards with vacancies, please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The town has installed a ballot box for the general election located on the backside of the bank building and 488 Main Street. Trick-or-treat in Dalton will take place on Monday, October 31st, from five thirty to seven PM. And the eighth annual changing of the flag ceremony will take place Friday, November 4th, starting 11:30 AM at the Dalton Senior Center, see the town's website for more information. And BRPC is requesting public comments in the 2023 to 2027 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Report through November 12th. A link of that report could be found on the town's website. The next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, November 14th, at seven PM at the senior center with an option for remote participation, and with that, have a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion second discussion, fair or none? We are adjourned, and thank you, Dalton.